Good evening and welcome to the March 28th meeting of the Town Council. If you'll kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening Nancy Murphy and Mackenzie Murphy and Andy Hunter have been excused. Mackenzie and Nancy might show up, but I'm thinking this might be a relatively quick meeting, so.
Oh, shit, sorry.
Sorry.
You just cursed.
My mistake. My only announcements are upcoming meetings Thursday, April 11th, Thursday, April 25th are our two regular meetings, both starting at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And on Tuesday, April 9th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM is our annual meeting voting day. And you can check for your designated polling places at the Town website. It'll direct you to the Secretary of State's website. Paul, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The 2024 dog license is, are available at the Town Clerk's office. Per New Hampshire state law, all owners of the dogs for months or older are required to license their dog by May 1st. Owners must present a valid rabies certificate and a neutering or spading certificate if applicable. If you no longer have your dog, please contact the Town Clerk's office at 603-424-3651 so that they can update their records. Absentee ballots for the April 9th Town Meeting Voting Day are now available at the Town Clerk's office. Finally, the Merrimack Police Department has seen a large increase of scam activity. The scams have been reportedly involving more elderly community, but not, but not always. We have taken several reports, the police department that is, where the scammers have used the internet, emails, and telephone, both cell and landline, to steal thousands of dollars from citizens. In an effort to assist our community to cut down on this fraudulent activity, we're looking to put together an email list. This email list will be used to communicate valuable information involving scams and other important information that we receive through multiple federal agencies and organizations. Once again, the police department will be doing this. Signing up is easy and free. Send your email address or phone number to our Community Services Officer Detective Bill Vandecide at W V A N D E R S Y D E at MerrimackNH.gov. If you have any questions, you can also contact Detective Bill Vandecide at 603-420-1842. And once again, his email address is W V A N D E R S Y D E at MerrimackNH.gov. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Comments from the press and public? If you'd like to address the council, you can step to this mic or sit at this table. See no one coming forward. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements. And our first appointment this evening is our annual review with the Highway Safety Committee. That at least annually, there should be a review with the Highway Safety Committee. And the agenda is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns the council should know about or could act upon. Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
It's the best committee in town.
It is. Not Debbie part of it, certainly. So, the Highway Safety Committee met once last year where we discussed two separate issues. One was a request for a guardrail in the area of Pearson and Hamilton Court. The resident there had a couple vehicles slide off the road into his yard. However, we determined that didn't meet the criteria for a guardrail. We follow what's called the manual and uniform traffic control for guidance of where signs, guardrails, delineators should be placed. And to meet the situation, we offered some suggestions to him, but mainly pointed out that sometimes an unimpeded side of the road is much better and safer than having a large rock or guardrails there because it can cause injuries. The other issue was at Old Blood and Captain Bannon Circle. Someone wanted a stop sign placed at Old Blood Road where it meets Captain Bannon. There's only about six houses in that portion of roadway. And this also did not meet the requirements for a stop sign either, so it was not warranted. We also feel a lot of questions and requests during the year for basically speed studies. A lot of people reached out to us saying people are speeding down this road. We need to change the speed limits. We need to go do this. We need to put speed bumps in. So, we deploy our data collection boxes and we figure out what the actual speeds are, if there's any concerns. And all those were unfounded as well. Everything was within the 85th percentile of the speed limit. So, that's standard pretty across the board. So, there's no issues at all. And we field other questions regarding signage, but there was nothing else that was brought towards the committee.
Thanks, Chief. Anybody have any questions?
I just have. So, if I'm understanding, if someone complains of speed, and if one person does it, I'm sure that doesn't require it. But if there's a street that is concerned about speed, you put, you put something out there to monitor?
It can't just be one person complaining about it. They're saying it's basically, because a lot of times the perception of a moving vehicle in a tight area feels like, it looks like it's going quicker. Or vehicles going on a curve, they appear to be going faster than they really are. So, we want to supply the resident with data that shows them there's really not an issue here.
How long do you do it for?
Typically, two weeks.
Okay.
And sometimes we flip directions. Sometimes try different kinds of years. We try to accommodate the citizens, let them know that, you know, we're really trying to research it. And there have been areas in the years past where, yeah, there were, you know, issues with speeding during certain times of the day where we would focus our directed patrols and have a patrol officer out there.
Nice to know. That's all, thank you.
It was a great tool for us because it really cuts down on a lot of citizen complaints.
And it's based upon facts.
Yep, and we do share the data with the residents.
Perfect. So, I happen to have suggested to that resident that asked you about the guardrail, that he'd come to your committee to talk to you about. I was wondering if you could amplify why a guardrail there would not be a good thing. Given that, I understand a wheel from a car has hit his garage and a car's gone through his fence that he had there. And it's a dangerous place for his house, I guess.
So, I guess that's the risk you run when you're on a roadway like that. However, we defer to the manual uniform traffic control. I also rely heavily on directed twomelas to look at the grade of the road and the curve of the road to determine if it's, if it's a valid place to put a guardrail and it is not. It's not that extreme there that it needs to be a guardrail needs placed there.
So, how do you stop cars and wheels from going off the road and hitting his house?
It really could happen on any curve in Merrimack.
Yeah.
Could.
Well, it could. But it has happened there multiple times.
There was, I believe, only three accidents there in the course of several years.
Okay.
So, it wasn't determined that it was needed there. We offered some suggestions. If you wanted to put up, you know, large boulders more on the inside of his property. If you wanted instruct, you know, put up delineators himself, he could. But we also explained the hazards of that, that those could become, thrown projectiles if they are dislodged by a large vehicle or a small vehicle can really send a delineate, which is the post on the side of the road, could send it far away.
I think as well, there's always the concern of precedent setting. And so, if we, by following the manual, I think it's a safe bet to protect us from that problem. Because if we start putting one up there, you could easily see how it, it could change the game. We've had conversations over the years. Wilson Hill Road, there's kind of that, not quite an S-turn, but it's a curvy part of the road. Have been a few fatalities there, actually. You know, no real way of remedying that problem. We have signs up all over the place there. It's just that some people choose to go too quickly and it can, you can easily have difficulties on the road. But a speed limit is posted, it's warned. And so, I, I think following that manual really has, I think, has benefited the community because of those potentials.
And it's also, we get a lot of requests for stop signs.
Right.
And just think about, this isn't the big city where we need a four-way stop sign. But imagine some of these smaller residential areas. And we get requests for stop signs at every single intersection. Number one, it's going to cost the town a quite a bit of money on maintenance and installation when it's not necessary when you have a low, a low traffic flow in those neighborhoods.
Right. Because I'm sitting on the committee, I've learned over the years that you're not supposed to use stop signs and things of that nature as traffic calming devices, you know, to slow people down. I think some communities do do that because I've been through neighborhoods with a stop sign every intersection. But in Merrimack, we've, we've avoided those things. Again, it's, it's not, it's recommended that you don't do it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Oh, you're not going to have any meetings for the whole year?
All right. Next item on the agenda is a housekeeping item. And Paul wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, the, the public hearing that is proposed next for a group petition that we received on the last day of, allowed by the state statutes. An order for the Town Council, when they did this, to review it, they made the determination that to move forward and put it on the ballot, so to speak, to go to deliberative session for the people at deliberative session to, to hear it. However, by all means, Charter Article 10, 1, colon, B, for group petition, Town Council must have a public hearing no later than 60 days after receipt of the petition. We are housekeeping issues. We're having that public hearing now. What happened was the initial petition that received was changed at deliberative session. So, tonight at the public hearing, we are going to be talking about the new language that happened during public, during deliberative session, that Merrimack Police Department shall maintain a standard operating procedures consistent with the New Hampshire State Police, a fair and impartial policing practices. So, that's what the council will be discussing tonight during the public hearing. We are no longer hearing the original language that went out. And I know we put in the paper with the original language. I know we sent it to the first 10 people that were supposed to because of what we have to follow with Charter Article 10 dash 1B. But to get in at people enough lead time and to get in the paper, we had to do it before the deliberative session, which was held on a Wednesday. We had to get it out by the Monday previous. So, that's, I don't want anybody to be confused that we're talking about the old language. We're not. We're talking about the language right now that was done at the deliberative session.
Did you want to read that?
I can, I read it again. The petition was amended at the deliberative session and we'll be holding a hearing to discuss the amended language. Merrimack Police Department shall maintain standard operating procedures consistent with the New Hampshire State Police, fair and impartial policing practices.
Okay. Does anybody have anything on the council?
I'm just, I guess I'm curious, does New Hampshire State Police have a quote-unquote "fair and impartial policing policy"?
That is why the police chief has stuck around and he didn't run right after us.
All right, thank you.
It's on, it's on, Chief.
That's what our policy is modeled after, along with several other departments in the state.
So, do they have a document that's quoted "fair and impartial"?
Correct, that's what our policy is modeled after. Same exact wording, as well as several other departments in the state.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, nothing further from the council. I'll open the public hearing at 7:14. If you'd like to address the council, you can sit at this table here or stand to the mic. See no one. I'll close the public hearing.
Can you make sure the light's on?
Yeah, it's on. William Barron's at 25 Island Drive. I guess Paul just kind of discussed there that the article in the paper was not the correct wording for what was proposed for the sanctuary city?
It, that was proposed in the group petition. However, at deliberative session, a motion on the floor was made to change the language to the language that I have read.
That you just read?
Right.
Is that what's going to be put on the ballot when we go to vote on the 9th of April?
When you vote on the 9th of April, the language will be the what was amended at deliberative session. That the Merrimack Police Department shall maintain standard operating procedures consistent with New Hampshire State Police, fair and impartial policing practices. However, it will be formed in a question.
Okay, so it's going to be like a yes or no answer?
Yes.
Okay, because that was going to be my question. Because I read over this article a couple of different times and I was still confused. You know, I consider myself, you know, okay as far as being, using common sense. But I wanted to, you know, I wanted to confirm that, that a yes vote was going to be to stop the sanctuary city. But you've already said that that's not even going to be in there. So, basically, you've answered all my questions.
Right.
All right.
Thanks, Paul.
I'm done. Thank you for your time.
And I guess.
I'll vote, too.
I guess the other thing that should be mentioned, that this is advisory. Because nobody, I can, I cannot even tell the police department how to police the town of Merrimack. There are state statutes and state laws and laws, federal laws, that they need to follow. And I can't override any of those laws. Neither can a police chief. They have to follow the rules and standards and laws of the state and the country.
Yep. All right. Is there anybody who would further like to address the council? Let's see, none. I'll close the public hearing then at 7:17. And that is, as was mentioned, has already been placed on the warrant for April 9th. All right, legislative updates? I don't know if there's any of our legislative delegation here.
I did get a legislative update. Our delegation in the town of Merrimack was trying to have House Bill 2024, the 10-year plan amended today, to remove that Continental Boulevard will be given to the town of Merrimack in 2025. Unfortunately, their efforts have fell on short with a vote of 175 to 195. So, House Bill 2024 will move forward with that caveat that they're going to make Continental Boulevard a Class 5 road and turn it over to the town of Merrimack, to the Senate. So, we'll have another bite at the apple in the Senate to try to get the Senate to remove that. And if the Senate does remove it, then it will go to Congress, Conference between the two, Senate and House. But we do have another bite, and that was an update. And it was a bipartisan effort to get this removed by all our representatives in Concord. Both Democratic and Republican were working their channels as diligently and hard as they could. And they just fell a couple of votes short.
Barbara, did you, were you listening to the testimony? Or did you just hear about it? Because I'd like to be have something said about what the head of the Department of Transportation said. That was inaccurate.
Yeah, I did watch it. And the testimony they provided went into various, what they considered the history of how Continental came about.
And they, as Department of Transportation.
The gentleman who was testifying for them. And that it was, his stance was that it was the town of Merrimack that wanted the exit because it's all tied to the exits, and then the tolls that were on the exits. So, in his mind, and what he testified was that Merrimack wanted the tolls and the exit, and they agreed to it, and they wanted it for, so they would have more industrial business down at that end of town. And therefore, they didn't understand what the problem was, and they're returning Continental to the town.
But Continental was built after Exit 10.
Long after.
In conjunction.
In conjunction, yeah.
In conjunction, 1992.
And even though Representative.
Was that the same time as the toll? I mean, is Exit 10?
Yes.
Really? Yes, okay. I would never remember that, okay.
So.
I didn't remember that.
I thought, now Continental was built, but not all the way down to Penetech.
Right.
Continental was built up to Contra Way.
Correct. The rest of it, when the state came.
So.
Right, because as, as Representative Boyd testified, when the state came in and decided they needed that for access to take some of the heat off of the exit for the ET further down the road in Nashua. And that's why they wanted it. The, it was, they, Representative Boyd said that they took it by eminent domain. This is not anything that we had. The road ended at a point, and it was woods up, right up until you got to 101A. So, but that didn't seem to make a difference. He had his prepared statement. It was the statement that I heard him make as well at the committee meeting for that committee. And.
And was that corrected? I know it wasn't corrected today, but it's a committee meeting, was that corrected?
To a certain extent, yes, by Representative Boyd, who also sits on that committee. That he tried to explain that, no, this was not, now, he didn't have the detail about the eminent domain and all of that.
The details.
But he, you know, knew the overall from when we had petitioned everyone and their uncle to get the tolls taken off of Exits 10, 11, and 12.
Actually, the state had to buy the property on corner of Tinker Road.
They did.
They bought the house from the gentleman. They split it. When the road came, that's how they got the road through because that was the last bit. When they split the road, they split the property into two properties. The right side of Continental Tinker, the left side of Continental Tinker.
They actually bought two houses, didn't they? One on either side?
I believe so.
And they've since sold those to people?
Yes, they have. And the gentleman who worked on the DOT project at the time remembers that and understands. And I don't know, there's a lot of different avenues we can go down. We just got to kind of, after the 11th, when crossover happens, on the 11th, we're just going to have to figure out our next game plan and how we want to proceed.
Just focus on the Senate. And after that, there are avenues that we can take. We'll just cross that.
We'll cross those bridges as we need to.
Okay, thank you.
But we will definitely be correcting that testimony when we advance to the Senate.
Right, they did want the exit. And there were people in town, selectmen at the time, who did say we will accept the tolls. And they beat us over the head with that for decades as we asked them to.
Until they were paid off.
Right. And so, so that's why, you're right, the furtherance down Continental, nobody asked for that.
And, you know, there, there's ways we, we can approach this. And I know this isn't the time, but we can have Nick, Nick set up a camera out that way for a day and catch all the tractor trailer traffic.
But we've, we've got all the data.
Yeah, we have all the stuff. But, you know, we got to just put a game plan together of how we want to present this data to the next level.
And have options for the future.
Correct.
We'll do that.
And also in Representative Rung's testimony, when she spoke, she also went into a lot of that as well. Not only about the, the amount of traffic on that section of road, but also about how DOT, because of their plowing practices and their use of salt, had actually contaminated one of the MVD's wells.
Right.
And then the, you know, ratepayers, the water users then incurred a cost for MVD to actually dig a new well to replace it because it couldn't be used anymore, so.
They're just annoyed with Merrimack.
It's all right. Well, we'll cross the Senate component when it gets there, see what they're going to do.
Which brings us to the next topic.
Yeah. We're also at the legislative updates. Thank you.
That's all that I, I'm sorry, that's all that I had tonight.
All right, Town Management Report. What do you have there, Paul?
Just one quick one here. Merrimack TV will premiere the Cavalcade of Bands concert this Friday, March 29th at 7:00 PM. Friends and family can watch from anywhere on Merrimack TV app or locally on Xfinity Channel 8 or High Definition Channel 1072. Thanks to the Merrimack High School student Haley Delly, who is helping Merrimack TV with this production. And if you miss it on the 29th, I'm sure you're going to get enough of it on April 9th because we are doing our, our polling, Merrimack.
Coverage.
Coverage of the polling and the vote on the 9th. And he'll start presenting at 7 o'clock, be there until the results are out. But we'll be using this as a, so, as a fill-in for it, so.
That'll be wonderful.
No dead, no dead air.
Oh, there's a lot of dead air there.
All right, thank you for that Town Management Report. And there's nothing on the consent agenda, nor is there any old business to take up. Under new business, the council's to consider the support of the Merrimack Village District's request of a proposed change in winter maintenance, that the New Hampshire Department of Transportation issue a low-salt or limited-salt route within the wellhead protection area in the industrial drive Continental Boulevard area that provides drinking water to the businesses and residents of Merrimack. And Ron, are you going to be?
Yes, MVD representatives are here, Jamie and Ron, to talk to the council about this item.
Very good. Feel free to have a seat.
This came up, I just want to give you a little background. I'm sure Jamie's going to go into it again. But we had a meeting with New Hampshire DOT, MVD, a couple of our representatives up in Concord about trying to get DOT to reduce the salt they use in the wellhead protection, which was Wellhead 3, that we had to shut down, or MVD had to shut down. And one of their solutions was, we can do a low-salt, but I need the Town Council's approval. I need the police department's approval. I need the fire department's approval. I need DPW's department's approval. I've talked to my three departments, police, fire, and DPW. They're okay with the reduction in salt. If there is something going on, they'll do what they have to do to get it resolved in that area. We've used brine in our area of Continental Boulevard. We already reduced our salt in that area, so.
They, they did run brine this last storm. The day before, they were running brine because I happened to drive by them when they were doing it. Yes.
But, so, you know, so they're just asking for officially the town.
The state was, or we were?
The state was.
They were.
They weren't happy about.
Because I avoid those. When I see them coming, you got to go.
Which is half the reason.
Most of the highway.
Our turmoil.
Can you hear me?
It'll be, it'll light up.
And move it closer. Can you hear me? Oh, there you go. Good.
Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'm glad, I've just got about five minutes of slides that I thought I should share with you. But this has been a ongoing discussion with the DOT and the town. And I just wanted you to know that we've had a series of stakeholders meeting. Yesterday, we had one, and we had about 25 people on it. This includes about five people from the DOT, five people from the DES, a lot of the business owners, MVD, board members, and so forth. Trying to all get on board to get this salt reduced to a point where we can restore Natacuk Brook effort. Because it's, as you mentioned just a minute ago, and I'm going to talk about for a second, Merrimack has lost one of their wells at a cost to the town, or the MVD, of about $2 million. So, just, just for the purpose, I don't know if you can see this. You all are familiar with the three wellhead protection areas that are defined in Merrimack. The southern one serves Merrimack Wells 7 and 8. Well 3 was taken offline because of Merrimack Metals. 3 was taken offline because of the salt. And now, we've got two and a replacement well between 2 and 3, and then 4 and 5 to the north. The Natacuk Brook aquifer and the Natacuk Brook watershed is defined, as you can see here, with Natacuk Lake, Greens Pond, and then Natacuk Brook, and then the groundwater supply in the aquifer in between. All of those water resources have been impaired, very substantially impaired. And so, the point of what we're moving towards is to restore this particular watershed back to some kind of usability. Because right now, Wells 2 and 9, which are called, as you'll see, 9 up there, are being threatened also by the salt. So, you've seen this plot before. It's one that scares the living daylights out of most people in that over, since 1992, we've seen an increase of 1,000% of sodium and chloride. And what you see at the top is the, before they took Well 3 offline, which is where this graph ends, chloride reached 500 milligrams per liter, which the secondary drinking water standard is 250. So, double what the drinking water standard was. And then sodium, we try not to have sodium sources of drinking water over 60. And you can see that the drinking water was up to 200 in sodium. So, that's why Well Number 3 was taken offline. As this is just a tabulate, number 1,000%, Well 3 increased in sodium over those years, 900% for chloride. And you can see even in Well MBT, MBD 2, we've increased it by 200 and 300%. So, all the wells have been impaired by salt. The bottom line is, and everybody here on this board can understand, if you step on salt, if you are outside and it crunches on your feet, it's been done wrong. Because there should be no salt left on the pavement anywhere. All that salt that's left goes right into the aquifer. All that salt goes into the surface water and, and doesn't escape. It doesn't stay there. It goes into the watershed. So, how do we mitigate it? We got to reduce salt. That's the bottom line. And so, that means we got to change the culture of how we use it. That's number one. We got to start moving towards brine and liquid. And Paul's, you know, and the town have moved towards using brine. We've worked really hard with DOT. They hired a subcontractor, Sean O'Keefe, who did brine five times at that intersection this year. And just to give you an idea, the amount of salt that you use when you're brining for the same. the amount of salt that you use when you're brining for the same area is about ninety percent less than rock salt. And that sticks to the pavement, it 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 done right can be an extraordinarily effective way to reduce your salt load. So we're working on that, uh we're talking about moving towards anti-icing and and this is everybody talks about de-icing, but we wanna prevent ice from forming, right? De-icing means the ice is already formed, now you gotta work towards getting it to melt, it's a nightmare. Anti-icing is where we're going and that's what we're trying to promote. Uh calibration of the equipment, that's a very significant aspect of this because when you see that kind of salt on the ground, it's not calibrated properly. Training and certified operators working towards that, but tonight is an important step. It's for this board to sign the agreement with DOT to use limited salt on the interchange of Continental Boulevard and Industrial Drive. And without the support of the town, they're not going to take this as seriously. Um and so I'm I'm asking, maybe begging uh the town to, you know, move in this direction. Uh why is it important? Because the cost to treat sodium chloride exceeds that of PFOS. Which is hard to imagine because the MVD has spent twenty million dollars treating PFOS. The cost of treating sodium chloride exceeds that because you go from a carbon treatment to a reverse osmosis. That's why we don't desalinate in that in California or in the Southwest because it's just so expensive. Um, the other reason is that the the MVD has lost one of their wells and it's cost them two million. And at this point, their other wells are threatened in that same effort, so if we don't change our act act, and this is one of the easiest things to do. We put salt in, we can stop putting salt in essentially. Um, what is the MVD doing? I just wanted you to understand that they've developed a stakeholders group, I think, which has been very effective that I mentioned at the beginning with DES, DOT, MVD, Town of Merrimack, local residents and business owners. Four meetings have occurred so far to get this conversation at a high pitch with twenty to twenty-five in attendance every day, every time. They've installed observation wells, which I'm gonna show you real quick, and monitoring equipment throughout their wellfields to assess the changes in salt load so we can actually measure the differences of what's going on into the system. Uh they've installed WAPA signs that you've seen now on all the roads that monitor and show you when you're entering a sensitive recharge area. And we've attained a hundred thousand dollar grant, a watershed restoration um grant uh that's gonna be with DES and EPA to work towards an actual measurable goal.
Can you take a second?
Sure.
Just explain what WAPA is.
Wellhead Protection Area.
Okay.
The WAPA, W H P A is the Wellhead Protection Area. And what you see up here on this slide is the blue area, this is the WAPA. This is the wellhead, everything inside this blue area is the wellhead protection area. All these uh yellow dots here are the signs that indicate when you're driving into this area that you're entering a sensitive groundwater recharge area. Now, this is very common in Cape Cod where all of their wells, I mean, all their water supply comes from groundwater. Long Island, New York is like houses ten million people, all their water comes from wells. And that's how they operate is to reduce and maintain lower salt use. This map is quickly shows you all the sources of the salt. And so what we've identified here in yellow are all the areas where salt is being input into the system, includes storm drains, parking lots, state roads, town roads and residential driveways and parking, you know, so. That's our target right now that we're going after every person, every entity in that area to reduce salt. So it's not just hammering on the DOT and hammering on a couple of businesses, it's everybody in the area. Um, I mentioned this grant and I just wanna talk about this for one second. This grant is gonna be used to su- with the support of EPA now, uh and DES in a proactive way to fast forward this process, it gives us a little bit more teeth to move forward in it uh in in basically to move to this re- re- salt reduction process. Uh the objectives of this grant is going to essentially prepare and publish a sodium watershed restoration plan. Ultimately, in the next ten years, the goal will be that this watershed would be back to where it was. And we're already seeing, cause this was a light winner and they've started using brine, we've already started to see improvement at the interchange and I'll I'll share that with you in a minute. This is kind of important, um what I've done is showed here with an aerial photograph, a lot of the land use activities, but the yellow uh that you see here are now the areas that are being that we're focusing, that we're that began using brine. Brine ex- uh not exclusively, but brine in those three parking lots are all brine. Uh and our goal again is to get all of these uh areas moved towards that, so we're making uh an inventory of all the owners of those properties and we'll be um discussing that. Uh this is something I I wanna show you is that these yeah areas, this is the interchange between Continental Boulevard, Industrial Drive and those in yellow, all all the little uh area, those little things in blue are um let me let me put this into a PowerPoint, maybe that's a little easier, you can see that. Uh all that you see are the small dots are the monitoring wells that that MVD has spent money putting in. Everything in yellow is a monitoring well that has a conductivity meter in that we're measuring salt. And we measure it every, you know, every hour essentially, so we can measure the salt load that's coming in off of that. If you remember, some of you saw my presentation before, as you'll see that salt at that interchange, let me just go back here. This DD One, that circle right there in front of the interchange, these, this graph is the average of four samples taken four seasons of the year, so spring, winter, summer, fall. It's the average and you can see from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand twenty-one, we were staying at about four hundred um milligrams per liter, but in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, the average chloride went up to a thousand P P M, which is just unheard of and one of the measurements was at twelve hundred, which means that there was no real activity to reduce salt. And this is when the alarm bells went off and then we, you know, we made it very clear that things had to change. So that's, we're monitoring that now every hour, uh so we can see uh what's going on. Now, up in the northern part, we're well, you'll see production well number two in yellow, production well number nine. There are a whole series of s- uh circle, yellow circles, those all have conductivity meters, including the one most to the north, which is the actual surface water of Nattacook Brook, which right now has a sodium uh chloride level of about two hundred. Now, think of it this way, you you know, your urine flushes out the toxins in your body, uh whatever that is. And your stream is the process by which the toxins are gonna come out, right? So the salt goes in, it's ultimately gonna enter into that stream and it's gonna go out. And the more salt that goes and the other salts is gonna be pumped into your drinking water system. That's the only real two areas in evaporation, but there's three three options where the salt's gonna go. And so monitoring the brook is gonna be extremely important as we go through this, so. Just want you to realize that all of these things, the MVD has invested money on in to get get this done. And the state has helped with some grants, I mean, they've they've been awarded um at least four or five source water protection grants to help fund this. The WAPA signs was one of them. Um so our action items are to continue with the stakeholders meetings, we have a meeting coming up with DES, DOT, the MVD and town and E G G I to discuss how do we interpret their salt load from last year, because they've given us all their salt data. Now we wanna make sure we understand how to process that and we're gonna put it through some analysis. Uh we're going to try to obtain all the salt load data from all the applicants that are there to the best of our ability. Begin, we get to begin to work on this grant pretty soon, probably within the next month because we had to go through this site-specific project plan, which is a an EPA process. Uh and then, of course, reducing salt and and so tonight is really just to give you the ammunition and the thought processes, why it's so important that this town buy, you know, buys in as part of this culture change um and gets us to the point where the state feels comfortable that they can use brine more frequently, use less salt and be part of the team. And that's that's all I have, um so.
So our section of Continental Boulevard where we've already been taking these measures, is that what the state's section of Continental Boulevard would look like, um the you know, the after snowfall, what I've seen on ours would it would be replicated if they do embrace that?
And you know, one of the things about using brine is that it adheres into the asphalt, right? So as a as the brine gets sprayed in and adhere before the storm happens. And when the storm happens, there's less adherence to the snow and a less adherence to this, a- and as and I as climate changes can coming forward, the temperatures are more in the sweet spot for brine, to be honest with you. We're not getting, you know, we're getting a lot of that twenty to thirty-five temperatures and that's where brine is used. And uh you know, brine is used in the Midwest, North Dakota, um in some of the northern states, Michigan and Wisconsin on a regular basis. So it's not new technology, this is stuff that that a lot of the maintenance guys um are starting to move towards anyways. I was a key speaker at the the salt summit in in Albany, New York um this last year. And one of the public works directors came up and said, we've saved over a million dollars by transferring from salt, rock salt to brine in this one year. I mean, it's a big system, but um it was a pretty pretty impressive testimony. And they had one after another after another come up and testify testify about their change in using rock salt to brine, so.
Just got a question, I know you put the well in between Gentec and and the uh MVD warehouse. What are those measuring? I know, yeah, have you got measurements on those yet?
The new well?
The not the new well, the monitoring well on our property. I've signed off saying you could put a monitoring well between us, remember Ron?
Yeah.
Over by the warehouse.
This is the one down in this area?
It's on the uh.
No, sorry, I gotta go up to the next one.
Actually, you would get to it from our driveway to the to the warehouse.
So down in here? You talking about down?
Up closer to Continental by that retention pond.
Up in here?
Um.
Or no? This is Continental Boulevard, this is Shaw's right here.
So up by.
Is it, is it that one?
Thirty-nine dash thirty-five, that is that a?
Twenty-nine dash S and where's that? Over here, right, the twenty-nine, three S and three D?
No, um yes, we have had some uh, it's interesting.
I think that's the one.
Yeah, there's a double, there's a shallow and a deep probe in there.
Yeah.
The shallow uh is is near a storm drain.
Yes.
The shallow has been going up and the deep has been going down, so um it just slightly up. Uh but we don't have a lot of data to give us a trend yet, uh but it's it's a critical and a strategic location.
Yeah, well, the only reason why I'm asking about that is because we are starting to use brine in that area, I was just wondering how that monitoring well is playing out, because I know you got one there and you got one further south on uh on the other side of that as well.
Let me show you one, we just, I'll show you this, you you saw that graph that ended going north. So this is only one data point for one season, so it's not an average in this end and I I but the you can see that from this light winter that we had, plus the fact that they use a brine over the interchange, we're already seeing a very rapid change. Now, we haven't seen it yet at Greens Pond, we haven't seen it yet at Well Three, because it's it's a slug that moves, everything moves to the to the to the river, right? Or to the the brook. And so it takes a while for it to get there, but if we reduce the source in a year or so, we're gonna see those reductions going down if we can keep this trend.
Would the amount of rain we've had.
Helps.
I was gonna say dilutes it and speeds up the filtration.
Yeah, so it's like flushing out the system, yeah, um the more rain we get, the.
Cause we've had a lot.
We've had a lot of rain and that's, it's critical and help, it'll it'll speed that up. As long as it's not rain that's all runoff, right? We need rain that seeps into the ground and moves through the system.
Like today, today has been a constant.
Today, this is a perfect storm for us, for you.
So so one other question that I have is is, I know the target is zero, but what is your sweet spot?
So, good question, that's a great question. The goal of the watershed restoration program is gonna get is to get Well Three in the area in the aquifer down to drinking water standards, two hundred to two fifty, and sodium down to sixty probably, which is at a high end, but it's better than two hundred. That's the goal and that's one of the things we're gonna be negotiating with the EPA is what our goal is, but that's that's our hope. It has a measurable response and that is to get Well Three back online. Not to mention the importance of the stream and the s- in the brook and the creek.
Cause it just moves down.
Yeah, right.
As the uh five members, I think you've mentioned from DOT, I don't know what their positions are on your meetings, but have they been?
High level.
Again, are they sensitive to what's going on or they?
Yeah, we have the assistant commissioner on every call and every meeting.
And they seem to understand our situation and sympathetic to it, I hope.
Appear to be enthusiastically in support.
Okay, good.
Um with um sometimes uh this, you know, hesitation. So they they support the concept, they're hesitant to jump into the game too far, but I think the the landslide is gonna take them with us, so.
I was happy to see the brine truck going through.
Yeah.
Do we make our brine now? We still do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's um the tanks, now we have the tanks for it, so yeah, we make.
Yeah, I didn't, I I didn't know if that was storage, I didn't know if we, I knew we were making it and I didn't know if there was a more efficient way of
We gotta, we gotta get in probably some more equipment on it. You know, we might need some more equipment in next budget cycle to get what we have to do to get it, applications. But right now, we have a, we have a trailer with one.
Yeah.
That that goes around, I think it holds five hundred gallons or something like that, but we do, now we can store it. So we're not making it the day.
You're using it.
And using it right away.
Just to answer your question uh more directly, David Rodriguez is the assistant commissioner, he's been at everyone. David Gray is the DOT Winter Maintenance Specialist for the whole state. Um Dick's Bailey is the Turnpike Maintenance Superintendent. Um John Cochrane is the Turnpike Administrator. And Alan Hanscom is the Highway Maintenance Engineer. So those five people and then they usually have one other have been attending uh these stakeholder meetings.
Great, glad to hear it, good. All right, um Tom?
Yeah, so what you've presented, you know, a million dollar savings by some community or some town and all of the other things you've said here sound very glorious and there's no reason for us not to jump up and down with joy and say, this is wonderful. That can't be the total truth. I'm hoping you can maybe explain to me what might be some of the drawbacks that we should be considering here or what might people be concerned about, why why isn't everybody jumping on this bandwagon right away and saying, sure?
Well, I I mean, I think it's it's probably associated just a culture issue. It's been easy to use rock salt, that's what's been used all the time. And um you have to change equipment, right? So it is a, it is a change, we gotta go from just a spreader to a tank to a mixing, it has to be the right mix, you know, uh and so what's there's a bit of a science involved in it, so there's that process that takes um uh some time. The downside is, and what the DOT would suggest, is that if you are, you know, they would say rock salt and excess rock salt prevents all accidents. But at the end of the day, you know, we have to get to a point where we say, are we gonna drive in every blizzard? Are we going to be uh asking our state officials to provide black and clear roads under all conditions? And I think that the answer is that hat comes with a significant cost. And the cost is something that you're bearing right now as a community, the cost of losing a gr- oh drinking water supply. And you will lose more if it doesn't change, so to answer you, I hope that answers your question, because I think the other side is people would say, well, there there's no, the the roads aren't clear and we like clear roads. And we like to drive at the highest speeds we can at the time that we are in a storm, so. Uh I grew up in Watertown, New York, uh which is in the St. Lawrence Seaway in the wind, you know, it's like Buffalo. You know, when it was snowing constantly, people didn't drive in it, right? It's just they waited till the plows plowed it and got it cleared. And I came down from Montreal um this winter and Canada had been brining all the way down. We were driving in a snowstorm and we were going sixty miles an hour, I got to Vermont, we were driving sixty miles because it was all brine. We got to the New Hampshire border and we got into rock salt and we all had to slow down to thirty-five miles an hour. And you know, it's just a matter of, the state understands, I think, to a certain degree that this is the future. This is what's gonna happen and we're just, you know, hoping using this as a good test case so that other communities benefit. There are other cities that brine and that's the city of Dover and Portsmouth and those areas that also depend on groundwater. So um it just happens that this is a little bit of a nu- nuance for for you all and we have every reason to do it.
So so essentially, there's a cost involved in in transitioning, there's a training involved in transitioning.
Yes, there is, and the town started that process.
Well, I understand that, I believe me, I I'm well aware of it, my my work on the planning board and they're pushing for green snow probe.
Right.
Accreditation and things, which I don't know if that has anything to do with brine or not, but it certainly hopefully trains them on how to better uh manage their salt use, but and I'm not opposed to this, I just want, if there's anybody watching.
Sure.
On the audience to to be able to have some clue that we're not just all falling over.
Sure.
Uh that we are trying to pay attention to. Uh, that we are trying to pay attention to what expenses and efforts there are going on. So thank you, and, and I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
So, Barbara?
Just a couple of things. So I was on the first call that we had with DOT. And it was remarkable to me that we were actually ahead of them in the use of, of brine. Because we were already using it. We were buying the new, the storage tanks for it. They didn't even have the monitors on their trucks, because they were using a lot of consultants for the plowing. So a lot of the, we have the monitors that actually determine, if I have this right, how much salt dumps in any particular place. Um, and they don't. So I was kinda, it was a kind of an interesting conversation that was going on. But my question for you is, what can residents do and what's happening at, you know, we now, we have Slate, which is not very far away from where you guys hang out. And, um, you know, we have the industries, you know, such as Fidelity, who's in the back there. What, I know there were efforts that were being done with Fidelity, but what's happening as far as Slate and them? Are they also, because they're in the wellhead, are they, you know, have they been educated? Have you guys talked to them? And, because that could be a significant amount of salt there too. And are there alternatives to using salt and brine? Because no matter what, you still have sodium chloride going in with the brine.
Yeah. This is one of the things, and I'll, I'll let you talk about Slate for a minute.
So, some of the older companies that are in town, they don't have that restriction. Slate does have that restriction. The Mall has that restriction. So that's, that's one thing that we, you know, with the planning board's help, we have been able to set, you know, either a, uh, no deicing chemical restriction, the, uh, no salt or sand only. And obviously, the, the Green Snow Pro is one thing that we've been pushing. So Slate has a restriction. They're not, they're not able to use anything at this point. So hopefully, if it all goes, you know, we can lower the salt. We probably would open up to brine so that everybody can use something. But that's...
Down the road.
Yeah.
I suspect Fidelity's cooperative with this type of thing, I would imagine.
They have been.
Corporate standpoint, they would wanna be part of that.
They're committed to, um, reducing salt load up there.
They would be, yeah.
And, um, they have a sustainability group and they've gone to a no-salt, um, use on their sidewalks. They're using, you know, a couple of other products. And they are working towards, uh, trying to eliminate all salt use in their, in their facility. So we've been in communication with them. Iowa actually was this past week. And so that, that's been a, a really favorable thing. And they have some good consultants there that are supporting and, and also a good contractor who is recognizing that. With regards to individual use for residents, I think one, one of the things that's gonna happen is there's gonna be a, a mailer that goes out to residents on the products that they can use. And right, right now, we're waiting for DES to give us, uh, a list of some of the things that they would recommend. So that's on the agenda for getting to the residents.
So is that a use of potassium chloride?
Well, potassium chloride, Megan, it depends. You don't wanna use some of these products, because they have two chlorides for every...
Right.
You know, and so you're doubling up your chloride use as opposed to reducing it. But things like beet juice are some things that are used. But there are other products that are coming out. And it's, it's really, you know, I, I think what'll be good, and I want the DES to kinda bless this before I go promoting certain products, is that there will be an opportunity for residents to look at what they can use. And I think too, a lot of the residents, if they went to some kind of a brine, which, uh, we're hoping to be making, allowing brine to be, like, you go to the Public Works and you get sand, right, to, to, to put on your driveway. You might be able to go to your Public Works and get some, the brine that's mixed in the right, I don't wanna communicate. But that, you know, it might be MVD, you know, whoever, that you can go to a barrel and get brine, you know, and to be used in a hand sprayer, because it's, you know, it's a simple hand sprayer. That, you know, and there are gonna be residents that do that. I already know people who do that, you know, who use brine in their driveway.
Just to let you know, I live in that neighborhood. And really, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't know any neighbor who uses salt.
Yeah.
Because it really, you, you snowblow, excuse me, you snowblow your driveways.
Yeah.
And it really is based upon what's on the street. And the neighborhood, I've been talking about, but I think they're well aware that we are on the wellhead protection area.
Yeah.
And those signs, you're absolutely right. All of a sudden, they're starting to notice the notification that we are in one. So I think it's gonna be, I'm, I'm great, I'm glad that you're gonna be sending out mailers.
Yeah.
Because I think there are certainly new people. But I think in general, that neighborhood, it, it doesn't have sidewalks.
Yeah.
It's not like they're putting salt down. It's not a walking, if it's walking, it's street walking.
Yeah.
It's not. So I think you'll be, uh...
And the majority of the salt comes from the parking lots and the roads.
Correct.
So that's our, you know, our real focus. But we want the residents...
But every, every little help, every little bit helps.
There are residents, believe it or not, in this stakeholders group that are very interested in this, so.
I believe it.
And they'll be, hopefully, be the biggest promoters. We'll be able to say in three or four years, you know, if we're making progress. I mean, that's, it's very measurable.
Yeah.
We're either gonna fail miserably together or we're gonna succeed together.
So the council, really, the, the request is the council support...
And sign?
And sign, I sign, as behalf of the council. Support, uh, the, the limitation or the reduction of salt, um, in the Continental Boulevard on the state portion of the road. Jamie, what do you really need them to do?
Well, it has a place on this forum for the whole board to sign.
Yeah.
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 I mean, I think the board could vote you in to sign for them.
That's adequate.
But it does say this, it does have.
Basically, it reads, Merrimack Village District is requesting that the New Hampshire DOT issue a low salt or limited salt route from the Exit Ten on-ramp from DW Highway southbound onto Industrial Drive, continuing south on Continental Boulevard to the end where Continental Boulevard meets Milford Road. The undersigned town officials support the change in winter maintenance as the route is within the wellhead protection area that provides drinking water to businesses and the residents of Merrimack.
So moved. I don't need to read.
Welcome, Nancy.
Very well read.
I got her at seven fifty-one.
Arrived at about seven fifty, I think. So, what's, Tom? So are we all set with the motion? Yep, I was gonna call a question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. How was it? One, two, three, four, five, zero, zero? Five, zero, zero, yes. Uh, you have that, is that a clean sheet?
So I'll get the Police Chief, Fire Chief signature. Also talks about the superintendent at schools and there was one other signature that was needed.
So that's coming around? Okay.
Yep.
Do you want two copies of this?
I'll have a copy.
So are you gonna be making a presentation at the school board also?
Possibly.
Or have you?
Possibly.
Possibly?
Yeah.
We just haven't, don't have the date yet.
So Ron, I will, after we get the signatures of everybody, I'll give you a call. And, uh, this way, when the superintendent of schools on board, you get his signature and...
And off it goes.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Little upset the superintendent of school gets a sign, but not me.
We'll make a line for it.
Well, it says, "We're school board," so that's why I was asking if they were gonna have another presentation.
All right, um, so we'll move on while that's going around. Um, under minutes, we have minutes of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I move approval of the minutes of March thirteenth. Second?
Any further discussion on the motion? No changes? Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Uh, minutes of March fourteenth.
I had one comment on that, if I could, before we move it.
Yeah, absolutely.
On page seven of nine, line four, five. It says, "The visualization alone shows that the town of Merrimack residents do not have as a significant impact on Continental as does the through impact coming from..." And I just, I found it difficult to read. If we took out, uh, just the A in front of significant, it says, "Did not have as significant an impact on Continental Boulevard as the through." So we take out the word "does," take out the letter A before significant and add the connector "an," "an," after significant. Would be what I would recommend.
Any other modifications?
Nope. I move the minutes of the, the, what date is that? Fourteenth, as amended.
Motion by Tom Kenny, seconded by Barbara. No further discussion. We'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Comments from the press? Seeing none. Comments from the public? If you'd like to address the council? Stand to the mic or sit at the table here.
You know, I can't not speak on the mic here, right? For the record, I'm Rosemarie Rung, Twenty-One Ministerial Drive. And, uh, we just got out of session today. And I have some bad news. It's really made me angry about Representative Boyd's amendment. There was so much misinformation. I, I gave a speech and I tried to correct the, you know, as far as who, who owns Continental Boulevard, the history of it, the fact that it splits Thornton's Ferry. But I think it would be really helpful if our town manager or others could put together a formal report. Just a history of Merrimack's relationship with the state DOT. As far as the tolls, each of the tolls, um, as far as the ownership of Continental Boulevard, how that came about. Because this misinformation is so persistent. And Paul wrote a great letter. We had some feedback. But if we had a formal report that we could submit to the Senate, because we're gonna take it there next, but also to keep in the House Transit, uh, House Public Works Committee. Because we have to stop this. When I got elected in two thousand and eighteen, I filed a bill to get the Exit Eleven tolls taken down. And there was still misinformation being spread. Um, and it, and I'm just surprised, after all the time that we've done trying to correct it, we haven't been able to do that. And these lies have just been able to fester. And I, I think a formal, accepted report, and I think also, it, it could be somehow cosigned with the Department of Transportation. But I, I think we need something like this to, to get this ended. Um, that's just my, um...
I think there was a report, I think there was a report made, not regarding the Continental. But by the, isn't there? And it shows the history and what happened and...
It's a binder.
It's a binder, because...
It's a bi- it's a three-inch binder. I remember we, uh, we hired, um, Upton in Hatfield.
Who went through the history.
Who went through the whole thing and went through the history. And that's when we actually found out that the agreement was for the bond. That we did agree, the selectmen at the time did agree, um, to keep the tolls as long as there's a bond there. And, uh, we've paid several times over with it.
And it was totally unrelated to Continental Boulevard.
Right.
Because Continental Boulevard, the section that the state put in was after, I'm not sure, but it was after that whole Exit Ten and all that.
There was, there's some discussion, and I don't know if they found this, because it was brought up to the committee real quick, about, uh, did Merrimack selectmen at the time go up and request that portion of Continental Boulevard to be put in?
Well, show it to us.
Well, that, that's what we, that's, but that was some discussion there as well. And I don't think there was anything that has found that, but, um, I think on the eleventh, we need to put this on the agenda and really come up with a game plan of how we're gonna move forward. We have the draft letter that, like I said, I, I sent out, um, to, to everybody. If we have to, we can, uh, we can put a history on it too. Um, more, more so of a, like a timeline, a timeline to say, this is, this is this, this is this, this is this, this is this, as we go down.
So half of it's already done?
I think that's great, because if we could get that before the Senate hearing, um, I wouldn't mind taking it. I'm sure Representative Boyd and other Merrimack reps wouldn't mind taking it to people who would likely be testifying at the hearing. So that if they go ahead with this testimony based on falsehoods, they're doing it deliberately after having that, having seen that report. So...
Wednesday at Senate?
It hasn't been scheduled yet. It could...
It was just today.
Right. So it, today's crossover. So all the bills that we took action on today are now going to the Senate and it's up to them to, um, assign them to a, a committee and, and schedule the hearings. But I think that's, if we can get out ahead of that Senate hearing to make sure that the facts are presented and they're in a, in a way that is, I know it's not gonna be concise, but in a way that makes it easy for people to see what the facts and the history are, I think it would really preempt some testimony that would, that would occur that are based on falsehoods. So, anyway, thank you.
Falsehood, it's a nice way to say it.
If there's no further comments from the public, we'll have comments from the council. We'll start reading.
No, I just wondered if, um, we needed to get that done before the eleventh. Because they're on a tight timeframe when, once the bill's crossed to the Senate and they've gotta get them back out again. If there's any changes in them, because they gotta go back to the House and then to a committee conference or something.
I thought the crossover was the eleventh. That's what I thought the date was for all the bills to be, that you guys are voting on to go over. I don't know, I don't know the politics of there. Yeah, that's the question.
We were already hearing bills in...
I was gonna say.
From the Senate. So the date, I believe, is the eleventh, but we're already saying bill, so I don't know how that happened. But I, can I just make a comment about, um, what Representative Rung said? I'm sure Paul filled you in on, on the day and it was pretty frustrating for all of us. But the most frustrating part was not the vote, but that I met individually with several members of the, of the, the Public Works and Highways Committee. And as a matter of fact, had lunch with one today before that vote. And, um, he's a Nashua rep. And, um, the, he was the third person that I talked to on that committee, including the rec, the ranking member who was chair of that committee several times over. And none of them were aware that Merrimack never owned, um, that, that road. So, so what, what I see is the problem, getting beyond all of this, the misinformation that's been spread from the DOT, is that there is a, in all the conversations, what they said is, well, there's this fuzzy background of like institutional knowledge that's incorrect. So every time a bill comes up and we're asking them, well, why would you do that? You know, you guys, you know, you were supposed to pay for the whatever. So they, so based, there's this, a sense of resentment, quite honestly, was what one shared, that, um, you know, that somehow Merrimack should be responsible for these things. And Merrimack is costing the DOT for that road. So it, of course, the, the, um, you know, the, 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 um, expectation of responsibility should come back to us. So I, I actually think that, you know, I would have preferred a roll call vote, because that would have helped us to know who we needed to talk to. Because, you know, I, I think it's not really just that people don't wanna support it. And the people that I told on that committee said, I didn't know that, that will change my vote. And, and we just don't know how many people there are, because this is just over the years. And the last thing that, that, um, that they said was, they said, "Why did you vote for this bill? Why did this come up?" And they said, "Oh, well, it came up last time." And it came up again and we, we, it was what, it's like one of those things that it keeps coming back, so we feel like we have to deal with it. So there's this assumption that because it keeps coming up, it's important enough that get it off there. So I agree totally with Representative Rung and, um, you know, we, we tried today and I wish. But, you know, we know the further battles in the Senate.
If you don't mind, I just wanna add one other thing. The vote was a hundred and seventy-two to one ninety-five. So it was only twenty-three votes that we lacked. Um, and considering it came out of committee with a, um, an eighteen to one vote. So, I mean, I think we did a really good job lobbying as many votes as we could, but it was really tough. The chairman of Public Works was putting out numbers that they'd lost from our tolls. And I'm pretty sure that those were the gross toll revenues that they missed. It didn't take into account the cost of running the tolls. So there's just, it was just like swimming upstream, um, trying to get these facts out.
So that's the bottom line?
Well, remember when...
Was the tolls and the brine was the...
It, it's getting back at Merrimack. We've costing this money and so we, we need to get the money out of them some other way.
I, I think, um, which is interesting, because remember... I, I think, um, which is interesting, cause remember when we had this whole discussion about the tolls and they, they told us they were losing money? Remember that? And we were like, then why are you running a toll if you're losing money? Anyways, I just wanna say, I watched you guys, I, uh, waited all day to hear it, but, um, you all did a fantastic job, cause you could tell that you were all in sync, you all had your parts to play. And, you know, even those who didn't speak, you know, they were sending letters and writing and talking to people, because I didn't, I was surprised that you got it down to twenty-something votes different. Um, that alone is a miracle.
Yeah, so it's, well, thank you, thank you for that. I mean, we just keep fighting, it just, this has been a fight that's been going on. I mean, one other falsehood that they shared is that we wanted, um, the toll at exit twelve to go. But really that was part of that gas tax increase, that was kind of like a bundled. And I don't think that you can point to the town of Merrimack and say, you caused that. They got, they, they wanted the tack, the gas tax increase and they got it and that was just a bundle, so. Yeah, so I think, you know, maybe just some concise, bound report that, you know, we can, we can establish and keep in the office there and share with people, especially the people that are gonna go, and I, if I had a guess when the hearing would be, I'd say probably in two weeks.
We'll keep an eye on the hearing thing, but, um, you know, like, short memory. We were told exit twelve was going because they were losing money because exit thirteen came in. And the DOT made that statement to us, just like they made the statement that a manned toll booth, they were losing thirty cents per transaction versus the unmanned toll booth where they were nineteen cents a transaction and whatever.
But verbal stuff will mean nothing.
Nothing.
Cause they'll deny it.
Yep, so, uh, we'll, we'll keep an eye on it and, and get ready to roll as soon as we have to. I'm sure our representatives are keeping a close eye on this too and let us know when we have to get ready. And, um, the next couple of weeks, we'll just start working on additional, additional language.
All right. Anything further from the council? Tom?
I just, I just wanna remind everybody about the vote on April ninth. Please come out and vote. We have the town candidates, we have school district candidates. There's a lot of them out there, especially on the school side, so we need everybody's vote. It's one of the, the lesser populated votes and so anybody that can come out, we really would appreciate it. April ninth, all day, we'll be there, thanks.
Whether we wanna wear beer or not.
Yeah.
Didn't mean for it to be that way, sorry. Okay, is there anything further from the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Thank you very much.